Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Mesa City Council Study Session for August 19th, 2021. The mayor is with us today, but he's participating by Zoom. And for the efficiency and convenience of the meeting, I'm here and be leading our discussions today. So, thank you, Mayor, for being with us. Acknowledge that you're here, as well as all our other council members are present. And it's our first study session back from our break since early July. So, our first item on the agenda is to review items from Monday's August 23rd, 2021 council meeting. Do we have any questions, Council? Yes, Mr. Luna.
Vice Mayor, I've had a question on 4A, and I sort of warned Travis, maybe you could talk a little bit about that. This is exciting for the city of Mesa, especially if you use Wi-Fi, which all of us use. So tell us a little bit about that.
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Luna. So 4A is actually an item that came before council a while back, and we did a presentation on underserved parts of the community and that. And the reason it's back on there, and it was approved, this particular one was approved, the reason it's back on is the vendor that we had selected cannot, because of the chip shortages, provide the equipment that we need. And so, this is a request to add a second vendor so that we can get the equipment. But what the project is, is it's to saturate, this particular one is to saturate the downtown square mile with Wi-Fi. And what that's going to do is, is give free Wi-Fi access to folks in that downtown, in the square mile that this particular one covers. Now, we've got a larger project that's going to be coming forward that will expand that to census tracts that were identified, you know, and to communities that was identified with, in partnership with Mesa Public Schools, to fill the connectivity gap that's out there in our communities that we're all aware of and that. And so, so we're going to be using ARPA funds for, for that particular initiative, and there'll be some discussion on that later on. So this is exciting.
Yeah, so I can imagine because pandemic supply chains were disrupted, and the initial vendor probably was experiencing the same issues. And so, we're confident with our second one that we'll be able to complete the projects as presented.
Yes, and the beauty of this, and the way it fell out was this second vendor is a Mesa-based business also. And so, and they've been a great partner for, with the city of Mesa for years, and so, so it works out better.
Thank you, Travis. Appreciate your team's effort and all you do for the city of Mesa. You always do a great job. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Any other comments on that? I just wanted to say thank you for making, we've had Wi-Fi in the downtown area, but it's been kind of weak, so I'm glad to see it become more robust. And so, the square mile, for anybody listening, is basically from University to Broadway and Mesa Drive to Country Club. Okay, I got it right. All right, and you might, the public may be hearing a term called ARPA, and it's the American Rescue Plan dollars from the federal government, and they'll be exercised in various ways throughout our community. So when you hear that, we know what that is. Other items that need to be reviewed? Okay, I'd like to make one question. I know Nana's waiting to do something. But on item 4E, the landscape maintenance services for the city facilities for Zone I just wanted to inquire, what is Zone 7? It's a simple question for you to come all the way up here. I maybe should have asked by phone, but...
Vice Mayor and Mayor, Council, Zone 7 is, we have our landscape areas for all building maintenance divided into zones. And so, this particular one is more of the areas away from downtown for landscaping. The other one on that agenda item is secured sites, so that's landscaping in the parking lots behind the lock gates for the police department and some of our water treatment plants, places like that, that are secured locations.
Okay, all right, all right. I was just...
Fire stations, building, city buildings, city offices, but they're the ones that are away from the downtown area.
So, public facilities, basically?
Correct.
Okay, great.
Correct. They are not aligned with council districts. They're divided based on physical location to facilitate the maintenance services being in close proximity.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Mr. Luna.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I had another question since I saw Kim Maizan, I was walking in with her, and I see that 4L. So, Mr. Pombier, maybe Kim could speak a little bit about that?
Come on up, Kim.
I'm sorry, going to put you on the spot, but I know you're ready.
Right, we have several things on. You're interested in 4L, the DNA supplies?
Right.
So, in our laboratory, we offer full services, forensic services for DNA supplies, as well as toxicology. The supplies that we purchase usually are in larger quantities beyond the $25,000 that would have to go to council on a routine basis. So, we come forward with the supplies in one big batch so that we're able to routinely order those supplies. They also have a very short lifespan to them, so we aren't able to order like a year's worth at a time, so we have to order small quantities, usually over that $25,000 at a time, so.
Great, thank you, Kim. I know that you also do an outstanding job in leading our efforts with the Mesa Police Department, as well as other jurisdictions in and around Maricopa County. So, appreciate all the hard work, and of course, you need your supplies in order to do a good job, so absolutely going to support you on this.
Thank you.
Kim Saef. Vice Mayor, with your approval, can I ask him to give you guys a quick update on 5C?
Of course.
So, 5C, we're very excited, is an opportunity for us to partner with the city of Tempe to offer a full crime scene, or full forensic services, with the exception of crime scene. So, we are currently obviously doing the work for the city of Mesa. For the past 10 years, we have also been providing forensic services to the town of Gilbert. And now, with this, with your approval, we will be doing forensic services for the city of Tempe, which provides them uniquely a different service model than they're able to get from the state crime lab. We provide not just, obviously, accurate forensic services, but very timely. And so, in that, we are able to return results to them much more quicker, and that impacts their ability in law enforcement and public safety to impact their crime. And then, obviously, the benefit to Mesa is to be able to offer that quicker service and return results to reduce the crime, and not just the city of Tempe, but as a neighboring city here in the city of Mesa.
I have a question on that. So, how are the dollar amounts figured to provide the services for, say, our neighboring community?
Yes, so, this, we actually do an analysis of the amount of work that they'll be sending us. So, based on that, and with our, what we call our benchmarking models for how much work an analyst can do, the, the amount of money is actually to hire employees and to cover the cost of their reagents and consumables, as well as the additional supplies it takes on, lab coats, proficiency testing, sort of those other additional things that come with providing these services. So, it's to cover the cost of their portion of work.
So, we are covering all the costs associated then with the lab, and, and are, we're hiring employees to accommodate this additional work?
That is correct.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Mr. Thompson.
Does that also include retirement and all that? Is that going to be paid by Tempe, or is that paid by us long-term?
So, they, the cost of, the salary is, not just salary, but also the ERE benefits as well.
I think we're good on that. We have a fabulous facility, and very well-equipped, and very capable. And I'm sure other cities see the, all the services and things that we can do here that they can't do, and I'm glad to provide those services. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Vice Mayor, I believe staff, Nana, has a presentation on 6G.
Yes. Nana, if you can... Go ahead. So, 6G is on Sycamore Station, and so, Nana will be giving a briefing on that. It is just on our agenda, the vote will be on August 30th.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. This item was actually introduced on June 17th. However, we do have few updates that we wanted to provide that information to Council, and also receive a certain direction from you. I'm not really going to go through the whole presentation since we actually discussed this with you in June. But just for your recollection, this is a site which is at the corner of Main Street and Dobson. And this, what we are asking or recommending for modifications, the Smart Growth Community Plan was actually approved back in 2016. And during the approval, there were extensive discussion on the, a portion of the property, because that is actually what the city has at least hold on a section of the property. And I think Jeff is here to provide a background and all the discussion that transpired during the 2016. So, basically, just for a quick summary of the Smart Growth Community, what it does is basically is a master plan development that utilizes requirements of the Form-Based Code to create a unique development for the area. That's the whole idea and concept behind the Smart Growth Community Plan. If you look at this, this is a zoning designation of what we call the transect on the property back in 2016, this were the transects that were approved. The proposed modification before you is not modifying any of the transects or the zoning that was approved on the development. And I think that has been a little bit of, there has been a little bit of discussion on that. So, this is what you're looking at right now. This is the approved plan. You can see the building footprints that were approved as part of the 2016. The issue here back in 2016, typically, the Smart Growth Community Plan has two steps of approval. The first one is a preliminary development plan. And typically, the goal for that plan is to really engage the public and seek various stakeholders' input and all that as to how the plan is going to formulate, or kind of the overarching goal of the plan. And then, the second part of the approval process is the final development plan. That's really administrative approval, just like the Form-Based Code. But the reason why the preliminary development plan has to be done is basically it gets the input and all the community, surrounding community, and everybody interested, become aware of what is likely, the parameters of the development. However, back in 2016, there were very much detailed information that has really become very challenging, because the, the goal of the final development plan is when they have specific users and there is specific development, that's where you get into the details. But the overall plan was very specific that, for the past years, at least since I've been here, they've been trying to develop, but because of the specificity of the development, they could not, because it needed Council's approval to make those changes. So, if you look at the proposed plan right now, the highlighted parcel or property, that is the city lease parcel that I think, well, Jeff has more information about it. What you're looking at is the building configuration on the approved plan. You can see there is a portion, basically, that is now independent, because there are so ongoing issues with the city parcels that is not available right now for immediate development. With that, no development can actually proceed until, basically, they reconfigure the site and make those modifications. So, that's really one of the major reasons why the proposal is before you for the modification. So, kind of a summary of what is before you is the modification to allow the parcel configurations. They are also looking at setting modification to parking standards, and also thoroughfares that were approved. Typically, those road networks, the details are actually done during the final development plan, and again, modification to the building forms. There were, there has been a number of citizen participation processes. They've discussed that with surrounding property owners. There's been discussion with other community-interested groups as well. And I think since the last introduction with Council, the applicant has also continued to have certain communication with other different groups as well, that I think on Monday, they will be willing to provide you that additional information as well. So, what has changed from the last time we discussed this with you back in June, is staff is recommending to add a new condition to absolutely require the section of the property that faces Main Street, for the building that faces Main Street, to have commercial development on the ground floor. Because as you know, all the discussions that we continue to do is, we want to make sure that the Main Street becomes active again. And so, we are recommending that the ground floor of all the buildings facing Main Street will have commercial, and also, it will be designed to, to meet the commercial standards, the building co-commercial standards, because one of the things that we keep experiencing, especially for those of you that visit Tempe, there is several number of vacant retail spaces. And as we continue to see the growth and changes in the downtown, we want to create the opportunity for certain occupancy in the immediate term. However, build it in a way that in the future, when there is that demand, that it can easily transition to that commercial uses. So, with that, because the ordinance is being changed from what was introduced back in June, we have to reintroduce the ordinance again on Monday, so you will not be taking a final action until the, until August 30th. So, those are the changes, and I'll pass it on to Jeff to add anything else.
I can't really add anything else, Vice Mayor, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. I think Nana's covered it well. I'm happy to answer any questions, though.
Council, do we have questions or comments about this project?
Madam Vice Mayor?
Yes, please go ahead, Mayor.
Hi, thank you. Jeff and Nana, is, I, I know we've got, essentially, we've got two multifamily projects that I think are going to be the first developments of this, this, this large plan. And I know that the staff had a good reaction to the plans for the, the project that, that fronts, you know, behind the elementary school and possibly access through Dobson, but had some concerns about the one that, that fronts Main Street. It is the only, and I, and I heard what you said a moment ago, that, that we're upping the requirement so that we need, now have first-floor commercial for that proposed multifamily. Are there, is that the only chain modification that, that staff would like to see to that proposal? And with that modification, is, is staff then recommending going forward with, with the multifamily project that fronts Main?
Mayor, Council, thank you. Actually, if we could go ahead, a couple of slides. We have, we have site plans of the current proposals for the two parcels. The one, the one is called Dobson Station. That's the one you referred to behind the, near the elementary school. That has been site planned and designed architecturally in a, in a very high-quality way. It has received very positive comments through the planning process so far. We are currently working on a development agreement with that developer as well, and we have a lot of, of the quality development standards built into the development agreement as it relates to the overall project, to ensure that it's going to maintain its high-quality standards. Now, on the Main Street side, what you're looking at right now, I think currently, Sycamore Landings may be changing its name at some point. We do have some concerns, significant concerns with the, the actual site planning and architecture of the building, not as it relates to its relationship to the actual zoning, because from a zoning perspective, it's consistent with the zoning from a use height, things like, along that line. But it's, it's how the site is actually designed. We've provided some pretty significant comments back to the, to the applicants as it relates to their site plan and their architecture that they're already working on. The, the main concerns that we have is how that site really addresses the rest of the development site. So, this is the, on the north end of that Main Street parcel, will have the most relationship to where the future townhomes would go. And we want to make sure that that edge is designed in such a way that it, it's going to not detract from or, or impede the future development of the townhomes. We want that edge to be a nice edge so that it's leading to a natural progression of development to the north. So, we have provided some pretty significant comments related to those design concerns, and those, that developer is currently working on a redesign to, to address those.
Okay, so would it be fair to say that, that the, the ordinance that's being introduced on Monday and proposed to be voted on on August 30th? That, that simply deals with the zoning of, of this kind of master plan. To what extent will we still have control over resolving some of these issues that you've identified, you know, with the details of, of that, of that apartment complex that would front on Main?
At this point, Mayor, they will not receive their zoning, what we, the process is an administrative process through the Form-Based Code, and it's for what we call a zoning clearance. Zoning clearance requires Nana to, to sign off, that he approves the, the zoning and the site plan and the architecture. Until we, we as staff, or Nana as the planning director, are satisfied that they have addressed all of these concerns, they will not receive their zoning approval and be able to move on to, to building the, the project.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council, just to also add to it, so with the Form-Based Code, transect, the, there are specific requirements that they have to meet. I do not have the authority to modify those specific requirements, so they have to absolutely meet all those requirements. So, Mayor, to answer your question, if they deviate from any of those requirements, it will have to come to Council, or has to go through the board of adjustment process. We do not have administrative authority to make modifications to the standards that has been built into either the Form-Based Code or the regulating document that you be approving as part of the Smart Growth Community Plan.
Okay, thank you. I think I'm going to, I look forward to working, or meeting with the applicant and meeting with, with staff additionally, so that I can resolve some additional questions I have about this project. But, but it, it, I think we'd all love to see Sycamore Station develop. We were all thrown a huge curveball when the developer really couldn't secure the entire site for development. So, love to make lemonade out of the lemons we've got here, but, but I, I just, the applicant needs to know I continue to have some concerns about the, the piecemeal, you know, developing this piecemeal, and, and I, I understand the city continues to have control, you know, I think, is it for 40 more years? Maybe it's a 40-year lease, there's probably, I'm not, I'm not sure how much, maybe Jeff, you can address that. How many more years does the city have control over this piece before it reverts back to the, to the family that owns it?
Forty, 41 more years, Mayor.
Okay. So, anybody that develops this property is going to have to deal with us, and we'll, we'll be in the room, you know, making, helping to decide how this, this property develops for the next 41 years, which is, is great. And I'm just committed to, to working with the developer and, and the community to, to maybe resolve some of the additional issues that, that might still be out there. But I, I'll, I'll be in favor of voting to put it on the agenda on Monday, and then hopefully, I'll resolve the questions I have before the August 30th vote. Thank you.
Councilmember Heredia.
Hey, Jeff, as far as the, the area that is owned by, or leased from us, any conversations or any dialogue that's happening there?
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Heredia, after, after our last council presentation in June, I was contacted by a local developer who represents a, a capital interest that, that may have some interest in this. I have provided them with all the contact information for the underlying landowner, some details behind the kind of development agreement conditions that we were talking about in order for the city to be able to release our leasehold interest, the kind of things that we were expecting as a city to happen as part of that. And they have been working towards, to see whether they can get some interest from that underlying property owner to sell the property and be able to develop it consistent with this plan. I have not heard from them in quite a while on how their progress has been. I will, I will make an effort before Monday to reach out to them and see if there's an update I can provide to Council.
Thank you. So, currently, we have a development agreement on the property, do we not? And then, we're, you're asking Council to kind of break that up into two parts, two pieces, correct?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Freeman...
Just Mark is fine.
Yeah, well, not, maybe in the office, Mr. Freeman.
Well, you live in D1 now, so that's an improvement.
We, 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 we essentially negotiated a full development agreement back when the city property was part of the overall development. Once they were unable to, to get act, or get site control of that property, we suspended the development, development agreement negotiations, so we never brought it to Council for approval. But it was negotiated almost to its completion, so a lot of the conditions that we would have expected of any developer, we have already negotiated with this developer, and we can just pass over and say, if you're going to develop this site, this is what the city's expectations are of you.
Okay, so, are we then separating the two parcels then from this agreement?
Correct. So, what you will see in the near future, should, should this rezoning go forward, Council approve this rezoning, we will be bringing forward a development agreement fairly soon for the Dobson piece that reflects their specific development proposal and the city's conditions, and our city, and our, I'm sorry, our expectations for the development of that site as it relates to the quality of the development. Because that developer is requesting of the city a GIPLAT lease, a government property lease excess tax. So, there are some conditions then that we expect for that incentive.
I guess some of the concerns I had is, you've expressed, but, you know, the continuity of this whole project and separating it out, and are we going to have, you know, 41 years from now, you know, are other councils going to have to be dealing with some other type of development there that may not be compatible with what's currently there? That's one of my concerns. And so, I'll have to vet that out, and, you know, as you work through this process. But I understand where you're going, so thank you.
You got the comments? I'd like to make a couple of comments on this. First of all, we are just approving for the zoning and the revision to the Smart Growth Community Plan. Correct?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. My, and I, I do like that we have the commercial along Main Street. This is a very retail-centric area, so I think it will work. We have the Safeway Shopping Center, we have the H Mart across the street. So, it doesn't bother me, or having, I don't have any concern. I think I do like having the commercial along Main Street to activate it, to keep it activated all along our light rail corridor. My concern is, if we don't approve this, it puts this piece of property in the position of not being able to be developed until someone figures out to how to assemble all these properties and all the requirements and all the, these, this whole thing. And so, if we can't develop one part without the other, this could sit there for a very long time, decades. It could be another Site 17. The property owners, the business owners along this area in the Asian District are crying for places to live for workers, for them to build the density, for the success of their businesses, for it to build out along the light rail corridor and continue our success. So, for me personally, I don't, I think it's a, a good move to continue the progress of this development. Yeah, Mr. Smith?
Mayor and Vice Mayor and Council, I just want to let you know, we'll update in Legistar the, the ordinance with the condition consistent with what Nana presented, and so you'll see that before Monday. So, if people are going to go to Legistar right now, the, the ordinance doesn't have that additional condition, but we'll be updating Legistar here with that condition here before the meeting.
Great, and as we mentioned before, this is just the introduction for public notice, and there is time to review it in more depth and ask more questions next week, and then we'll vote on it on the 30th. So, we have time for more discussion. Thank you. Anything else on the agenda that we need to review? If not, we'll go back to our study session agenda, and the next item on there is to take action on appointments to various boards. Is there a motion, Mr. Freeman? A motion to approve, and Ms. Spilsbury seconded, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
And, and no one opposed. The motion passes unanimously. Next item is to acknowledge minutes of various boards and committees. A motion to approve, Mr. Luna, and seconded by Mr. Thompson, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
And, that was unanimous, and the motion passes unanimously. Next item is the meetings and conferences. Next item is the meetings and conferences attended. Now, we've been off for like six weeks, so this could be very long, but if you just want to highlight some things that you've been attending. Mr. Luna?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Let's see, Home Two Suites Ribbon Cutting, I participated in that. That's a hotel in East Mesa, which is absolutely wonderful at the Lambo Golf Course. So if you need a, a long-term stay in East Mesa, we, we have a place for you. So that was a lot of fun. It's located near Wrecker and McDowell in the Falcon Field area, so that's very exciting. Attended a lot of stuff during the summer at the IDM Museum Reception with their new exhibit. And I also attended a new exhibit at the, let's see, Mesa, the Arizona Museum of Natural History, is that right? Did I say that right? They have a great exhibit and I would encourage the public to attend. It's called 25 Million B.C. There is a young man named Billy who actually designed these wonderful sculptures of dinosaurs. And it's totally amazing. The fact is that he works for the City of Mesa and he works for the, for the museum. So please go out and visit that site. It's really, really exciting. Also attended with some of my colleagues, the LDS Visitor Center, which is located on Main Street. What's the name of the street?
Lesweare.
Lesweare. And so please stop by and visit their new facility. It's, it's absolutely beautiful. And then tomorrow I will be presenting the Mesa Chamber of Commerce Economic Development, things happening in District 5, so I look forward to that presentation. So that's about it. Along with all the NLC stuff I did all summer.
Thank you, Mr. Luna. Others? Ms. Phil?
I'm not going to go into a big list. We, we did a lot of that. We've been busy the last six weeks. But I did want to say a huge thank you to our Department of Transportation and anyone else involved in all the cleanup of our storms, power lines down. It's, I know you guys have been busy and we really appreciate all the work that's been done in our community these last few weeks. And yay for rain.
Definitely, definitely. Anything else? Mr. Freeman?
So Vice Mayor, I just want to make a comment and thank our respective city departments for, you know, these, the weather we've had. Other municipalities took a lot of hits. I know our fire and police and transportation and utility departments have just done an amazing job. And then everybody else who supports them, it's, it's, we have a great city and we're able to sustain minimal damage. I know that I drove a lot of our streets and some places got almost three inches of rain and some of these outpourings, but everything was able to move quite rapidly and everybody was back in service. I talked to Mr. McGray and, and he had some damage utility delivery on electricity, but they resolved those pretty quick. So I think we're really lucky compared to other municipalities and watching the news and other flooding in other parts of our state. So with that, I'd just like to thank our city departments. They did an awesome job.
We do have an excellent city in, in addressing all these services and issues. I'll add a couple of things. I went to some of the events that were mentioned. One of them that was unique was on Saturday evening, I attended the National Liberation of Korea at the Mesa Convention Center to celebrate their independence from Japanese rule. However, for, they were, I think for 35 years, this is their 76th anniversary, I believe. And it was put on by the American Korean Association, very powerful, wonderful event. And the, the arts and, and the performances were incredible. In fact, I actually, I broke a board for the Taekwondo. I had a little rivalry with the Mayor Chandler, Mayor Hardkey about breaking the board for, but we both were able to break our boards, although his were a little bit thicker. And our breakthrough was for breaking through the pandemic. So that was lots of fun. I'd also like to mention there's been redistricting meetings going on throughout the city. I attended one on Tuesday evening for District 4 and there's more upcoming. There is a virtual one next Wednesday evening for anybody that attended. So we're looking at redistricting our city for our city council areas. We've had a lot of growth in the southeast in District 6, a tremendous population increase with that growth. So we have to readjust our council districts, the borders, the perimeters of those so that we have equal representation in our council districts. So please attend and give your input about where your community is. Last thing we want to do is divide our communities. If you feel very connected to neighborhoods and where places that you go, that needs to stay together as one voice. And last night, I attended the Red Mountain Police Department Community Meeting and they gave an overview of the summer project focused on violent crime. It was very good. There's another one this coming week for the Fiesta and then for the Central Division is upcoming. So thank you to all our police officers for the tremendous work that they're doing this summer to make, reduce the violent crime in our city. And I think that's it.
Real quick.
Oh.
Vice Mayor.
I'm sorry.
I just want to echo our, my colleagues, all Staff, thank you for all the, the work as far as the monsoon season and public safety, including, included there. Also welcome to our students in our community going back to school, including Mesa Community College students that will be starting today, this week and next week. In addition to Mesa Community College, if folks still need assistance around tuition, we have Mesa College Promise Program that you all can still apply. So check that out at the MTC website, Mesa College Promise. So highlight that program if, if folks still need assistance. And so, thank you.
Very good point. Anything, Mayor, did you have any comments about the summer? Do you have anything I don't want to point you out, but I don't give you all the opportunities since I might have knocked you off?
Thank you. No, I, I just want to say amen to, to what everyone there has already said about the great job that the staff has done in responding to the storms. And I appreciate Frankie mentioning the Mesa College Promise, albeit an event on Saturday to kind of help kick that off. So if there are any students out there still wondering how they're going to pay for college, I hope they're, they're looking at Mesa Council College, I mean, I'm sorry, the Mesa College Promise. But thank, thank you. I look forward to being back with you on Monday.
Wonderful. We look forward to seeing you then. So I guess we're, next is Mr. Pombier, the future schedule of meetings.
Vice Mayor, Council, this is our quick turnaround. We will be back on Monday for a study session and the council meeting. And that's it.
Very well done, Mr. Pombier.
Lot of pressure, lot of pressure.
I'm sorry, Mr.?
John, so we're about two and a half years into now our sales tax for public safety. Can we get an update perhaps on public safety? How many bodies have been added to both Fire and PD since we've started or implemented, since the citizens voted for and passed the sales tax? Can we get an update on that?
Yes, we can bring forward a future study session, a review of the public safety sales tax, how it's been spent on both personnel and on the other projects that we've been able to do over the last two and a half years to show the citizens how well-spent their tax dollar choice was.
Perfect. Thank you.
Wonderful. Unless there's anything else, we'll go ahead and adjourn. Is there a motion to adjourn? Oh, here we go. Mr. Freeman made a motion and Ms. Spilsbury seconded. All in favor? Say aye?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.